Call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Belsley.
Here.
Blunier.
Here.
Parrot.
Here.
Layman.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Parrot.
Here.
We have a quorum.
If you join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public hearings tonight, but we do have a special presentation tonight, and so we'll do that now. We're here again tonight, I think, fourth out of five years now, to congratulate our high school girls' basketball team for winning another state championship and representing Morton not only on the basketball court, but throughout the school year. So we have some awards here, but we also have a proclamation, and trustee here is going to read that for us.
All right. I get to read it since my shirt kind of matches the uniform, so, all right. And I asked the lawyer, we have to do the whereas as well, so there's a lot of whereases in this deal, so. All right, so this is a proclamation of the Village of Morton recognizing the Morton High School girls' basketball team for winning the 2019 Class 3A State Championship. Whereas on March 2nd, 2019, the Morton High School girls' basketball team won the Class 3A State Basketball Championship by beating Glenbard South 35 to 21. And whereas, it is Morton's fourth basketball state championship in the past five years, including 2015, 2016, 2017, and 2019. And whereas, the Potters finished the season with an amazing record of 33 and 3. And whereas, the team earned a fifth straight Middle High Line Conference Championship with an undefeated 14-0 record, which extended an impressive league-winning streak to 47 consecutive games in the Middle High Line Conference. And whereas, the Potters garnered the top seed in their subsectional, won the IHSA Morton Regional, won the IHSA IVC Shillak Coffee Sectional, and won the IHSA Coal City Supersectional, and completed their postseason with the state championship at ISU's Redbird Arena. And whereas, members of the Morton Potters include seniors Addie Cox, Tinley Dow, Megan Gold, Claire Kraft, Catherine Ryman, Bridget Wood, juniors McKenna Baumann, Matty Becker, Peyton Deering, Lindsey Dullard, Courtney Jones, and Olivia Remmert, sophomore Raquel Frakes, and freshman Katie Krupa. And whereas, members of the coaching staff include head coach Bob Becker, assistant coach Bill Davis, assistant coach Brooke Bisping, and assistant coach Megan Hassler. And whereas, the team and coaches represented Morton High School and the Village of Morton with character, courage, confidence, and class throughout the season and state championship series. And whereas, the Village of Morton is proud of the accomplishments of the Morton High School basketball team. Now therefore, be it resolved by President Kaufman, along with the Village Board of Trustees, commend the Morton High School basketball team for its achievements and for the dedication of its members and coaching staff. Wherein too, I have set forth, oh, we don't have to read that part of it, we're good, so, finally. So congratulations, girls, awesome job.
So if we could have the basketball team line up here with the coaches and maybe the captains in front, we've got a couple of trophies to give you.
Three captains.
That's a lot of whereas.
The one we have here is the former Morton High School girls' basketball 2019 IHSA Class 3 A State Championship, so we've got the one in the coaching area and one in the front office, so the girls count, promoting basketball, Morton now going, and the Zebra defending champions, so.
Thank you.
All right. Do you just want me to say a few words? Okay, or that's okay. So just, we, from a village perspective and an avid basketball fan myself, played high school basketball, I think I got to say this speech a few years ago as well for you guys, but just, we couldn't be prouder of you. You guys do an incredible job, both in the classroom and in the community, and obviously on the court. And it's really, it's proud to go places when you have the Morton basketball and people know, when I take, you know, my daughter around or son when we play in different tournaments, everybody knows who you guys are, and that's the hard work and dedication that you put in, and it's something our community can be very proud of, so always remember that, keep it, you know, forever, and it's a pretty cool accomplishment for you guys, so we just, from all of us, just thank you, so appreciate it.
Hey ladies, we've done this one a hundred times.
Yeah.
All right, ready? Three, two, one. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're trying to drop the wall, but we thought so.
Congratulations.
No, I know, but I was totally late.
Thank you. We appreciate sharing with our community. It's been a lot of fun. Little known fact, that a coach long ago, that was an assistant of mine, was Craig Hilliard, helped coach on the way up through some heat seasons.
And he won the spike.
Way to overcome all those obstacles.
We won't share your famous halftime speech. It worked. It worked. We appreciate it, thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Thank you, Sam. Any public comments tonight? All right, that's good, we have a lot to go over tonight. The consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes, the regular meeting of April 15th, 2019, and the approval of the bills. Could we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? If not, call the roll.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The only item I have tonight is the appointment of Wayne Mendel to the Tourism Grant Committee. So if we could have a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Village clerk.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village administrator.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Chief of police.
I have nothing this evening, Your Honor.
All right, corporation counsel.
One item tonight, Your Honor, which is ordinance number 20-01, an ordinance authorizing the lease of a portion of the real property commonly known as 375 West Birchwood Street, Morton, Illinois, owned by the Village of Morton, to Tazewell County Consolidated Communications.
So we have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? If not, call the roll.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Your Honor, if I just want to make a point that they're planning on doing the transition of coming out of East Peoria into our facility on May 20th at this time.
Thank you, chief. Director of Fire and Emergency Services?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right. And Director of Public Works?
Several items tonight, Your Honor. First, in front of you is item A, ordinance 19-29, this is an ordinance making amendments regarding development fees to Chapter 13 of Title 8 of the Morton Municipal Code.
If I could have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
This one was discussed at the April 1st board meeting. Pat, would you mind reading this one like we did last time?
Yeah, bear with me one second while I switch to the right page in my notes. So the substantive portion of the proposed ordinance is an amendment to Section 8-13-4 of the Morton Municipal Code, and it would add a new paragraph which would read as follows: "A fee in addition to those fees previously set forth in this section in the amount of $300 per linear foot shall be imposed for each linear foot of frontage of an annexed parcel along a street which (a) was an existing street on July 1st, 2019, and (b) was not annexed to the Village of Morton on July 1st, 2019, and (c) is designated as an arterial or collector street on the official planning map of the Village of Morton at the time the property is annexed. Each July commencing with year 2020, the fee set forth in this section shall increase by 3% from the preceding year. The fee due under this paragraph shall be due immediately upon annexation."
So yeah, we discussed this the last meeting, made a few changes, because I think it was a little bit confusing the last time, but just to summarize, the intent of this ordinance again is to recoup anticipated infrastructure costs resulting from annexation for new development. This affects existing streets that are classified as arterial and collector streets on our official map, and the concern basically is we, you know, during annexation, we would inherit those streets that, from my perspective and staff's perspective, that aren't up to Village code and would need significant upgrades if not reconstructed. The $300 per foot is for half the street, and we believe those to be average or a little less than average of what the going rate is for a minor residential street, you know, those costs borne by the developer. So this is a significant change here, but we believe it to be appropriate, and with that, I'd like to ask for approval.
Any comments by trustees? Call the roll.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item, item B, I'd like to ask for acceptance of bid for the Paris Avenue Improvement Project in the amount of $405,847.00 and zero cents, and award of contract for same to Stark Excavating Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Parrot.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item is item C, acceptance of bid for the Pershing Street Improvement Project in the amount of $407,609.10 and award of contract for same to Illinois Civil Contractors Incorporated.
Motion.
So moved. Second.
So this project again came within the engineer's estimate and on budget, or within budget. This one was concrete, they're Pershing Street next to the Township Building and Morton Building, so this will be a nice upgrade there, and there were seven bidders on this one, which was really good, so again, I'd like to ask for approval of this.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item, item B, I'd like to ask for acceptance of bid for the Paris Avenue Improvement Project in the amount of $405,847.00 and zero cents, and award of contract for same to Stark Excavating Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments by trustees? Call the roll.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item is item C, acceptance of bid for the Pershing Street Improvement Project in the amount of $407,609.10 and award of contract for same to Illinois Civil Contractors Incorporated.
Motion.
So moved. Second.
So this project again came within the engineer's estimate and on budget, or within budget. This one was concrete, they're Pershing Street next to the Township Building and Morton Building, so this will be a nice upgrade there, and there were seven bidders on this one, which was really good, so again, I'd like to ask for approval of this.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item is item C, acceptance of bid for the Pershing Street Improvement Project in the amount of $407,609.10 and award of contract for same to Illinois Civil Contractors Incorporated.
Motion.
So moved. Second.
So this project again came within the engineer's estimate and on budget, or within budget. This one was concrete, they're Pershing Street next to the Township Building and Morton Building, so this will be a nice upgrade there, and there were seven bidders on this one, which was really good, so again, I'd like to ask for approval of this.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item is item D, this is Resolution 01-20, a resolution authorizing acceptance of Morton Pocket Park proposal from Farnsworth Group.
So moved.
Second.
Just a summary of this, it was discussed at the March 18th board meeting, and we were going to come back, so in that time, we'd come back with a proposal from Farnsworth for $21,500. The intent of what we have in front of us is to authorize myself and counsel to work with Farnsworth on this project. Actually, I'm probably tying this to the next one, but the intent of this is to bring back to all of you a pre-design and a schematic, and I believe it was $2,500 for that, if you look in that proposal, and then we'll present that to all of you prior to moving forward with a funding resolution, as was discussed at the March 18th meeting. So right now, this is 21-5, that's what we would be out if it never happened, so we're taking on that risk, and that amount would come off the $100,000 at this point from what we discussed last time. But my intent was at least bring it back, there'll be a 3D rendering concept plan, and at least bring it back in front of all of you so that we're all on the same page before we move forward with Leanne and Farnsworth to finalize the design.
Any other comments?
This agreement includes all engineering services, including construction, administration, but not inspection?
Yes, that is correct, and inspection, we'll just handle that just internally, staff, myself, Jamie.
And where is the estimate right now of project cost? Construction?
Do you know the latest, Leanne, on that?
We don't have the exact number back on the Schemis lab. I think with the pumpkin sculpture, we were at just over 200, and then the private-funded adult male sculpture will be separate from that for the other 30,000.
Did you say the 200 excluded the?
Includes the pumpkin.
Includes the pumpkin, so 200 includes that.
So at the time we come back to discuss the concept, we'll have an updated construction cost at that time. And then there's some details we've been discussing, myself, counsel, on things related to the pumpkin and the farmer sculpture, and how those things, I think even those two items would be paid for by EDC separately, ours would go towards the other construction items, so a lot of details that we'll discuss as we go forward.
Originally, we had presented a revision of the resolution that would authorize both the engineering and the funding, since the engineering cost commitment is not dependent, at least for what you're approving so far, it's not dependent upon the project being fully funded and approved. It was decided in working with Director Lautermil that it would be more probably appropriate based on what you're actually approving to bring the engineering agreement separate from the funding resolution.
Any other comments? Not? Call the roll.
Blunier.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item is item E, Resolution 02-20, this is a resolution authorizing professional service agreement with Curry and Associates Engineers Incorporated for water treatment plant upgrades.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, just to summarize, actually, before I get started, I'd like to introduce Andy Curry that's out here. It's the first time we've worked with Andy while on the pilot project, but this will be the first time working with Curry. And then we also have Bob Burton, the current water treatment superintendent, and then the future water treatment superintendent as of September 1st, Trent Reed. So I wanted them to be available that way if there was questions, and we could at least cover all angles of this one. With that, this resolution would authorize, I think I confused this with the other one, I got them all mixed together, this would authorize myself and Pat, counsel, to enter into a professional service agreement with Curry and Associates for engineering services, design, bid guidance, and engineering services for the water treatment plant upgrades on a time and material basis for an amount not to exceed $725,250. This number was derived, I'd sent you guys, you have a hard copy in front of you, too. This was derived from the USDA Water and Wastewater Guidelines for what we anticipate to be a $10 million construction project. Hopefully it's less than that, but from touring several plants down around St. Louis and Iowa, trying to gather information and anticipated construction cost, we feel it to be in that $8 to $10 million range. So what's in front of you is just authorizing us to continue to work with Curry. Got a pretty detailed proposal, I would think within a couple of weeks we'll be final with that and be ready to move forward. We recently received feedback from EPA on our proposed pilot study for a nitrification reactor for ammonia oxidation. In their letter, this came April 12th, they look forward to our submittal of the application for construction permit. I want to mention that because they've been with us by our side from the start, and as Andy mentioned in his proposal, I, along with Andy, believe the foresight by all of us, including all of you, and some of you guys out here, that we're taking our leading role in tackling this project, and it will not only benefit water customers into the future for Morton, but also many other communities throughout the state. This is the first of its kind in Illinois, and that's in regards to tackling ammonia levels in the Mohammed Aquifer. So we believe this is the solution, EPA believes this is the solution, and this would get us started on most likely an 18-month process here to get to the point where we can start at the treatment plants, so. So with that, I'm glad to answer any questions, comments?
Just a couple of questions. The, I guess to start off with the rough estimate of $10 million.
Yep.
Hopefully top end. That's looking at the improvements at the water plant on Detroit Street, also the, what will be necessary in the way of projects to shut down Plant 1?
I would say to shut, it wouldn't be to demo Plant 1 or do anything like that, but I would say it'd be related to that, yes.
Distribution system improvements or things that might need to be tweaked?
Yes, that would be included with that. The couple of things that aren't included on that is, and we had talked to Yukin and several others, if we need to, we're trying to process of reviewing a new well to improve capacity, that's not included. On the other item in there, as you'll see in the proposal, the other item is the electrical service at 2 and 3 is approaching 50 years old, so those are things we're working on right now, and that wouldn't necessarily be included in that. Obviously, I'm hoping you trust myself and Andy, this is a T&amp;M, I'll have their rates, I'd be glad to share that with all of you. We'll review this on a monthly basis as we go, you know, with the task and all that. I mean, my hope is we come in significantly under that, obviously, you know, depending on how things go, but we'll stay close along the way, and you guys can feel free to contact us if you want to know status, I'll give, give status on that, so that's where the T&amp;M came from. You know, obviously, I'm not, you know, just to throw out that it's a $10 million and this is going to be the cost, I'm not looking to just write a check for that, and I think Andy understands that, but this would allow us the flexibility to move towards that. You know, obviously, in the $10 million project, we're hopeful, I mean, we got some big bids on the street projects tonight, but this is a little different type of project, companies like River City, hopefully this generates some interest in others, even outside the area. It's, I know East Peoria's doing a $45 million upgrade, and there's some people up here for that, that could significantly change that construction cost, too, as opposed to doing it in St. Louis. We're not sure of those dollars. We'll be working hand in hand with River City and some other contractors to help us with that throughout this process, too, on possible construction costs going forward.
If there's any other questions, call the roll.
Parrot.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, the last item is item F, this is ordinance 20-02, this is an ordinance making amendments regarding dangerous trees to Chapter 9 of Title 8 of the Morton Municipal Code.
Is this approved?
Second.
Just to give a summary of this one, this basically adds to 88-1, dangerous trees is a nuisance, this is something we've talked about for several years, obviously, to have a tree removed from your property is not a small investment, it sometimes can be fairly expensive. As a result, though, there are some situations where they can be a danger, not only to citizens, pedestrians, but also property, so what this does is, and I'll just read a portion of it, "Any tree or portion thereof that is dead, diseased, insect-infected, or damaged, and that because of such condition constitutes a significant risk of injury to persons, obstructions of traffic, or damage to property, including, without limitation, damage to other trees or vegetation through the spread of disease or insect infestation, and this would be other than private property on the same parcel of which such tree is located. As far as how to abate it, this would give the authority to the chief of police, zoning enforcement officer, and the village attorney to serve or cause to be served a notice and writing upon the owner of which the nuisance or the dangerous tree exists. Such notice shall require the owner to abate the nuisance within specified reasonable time, not less than seven days." There's also a sentence in there that also, if it's imminent threat of serious injury to persons or serious damage to personal or real property, the village shall proceed to abate such nuisance without the necessity to provide seven-day written notice to the owner. So that's a summary of it, I think some of us could drive off, you know, in town, there's several that caused us to come up with this, and this will be something we're working on, you know, with homeowners, but those that have trees that have half dead and the other half sticking out over the right of way, those would be the ones that we're most concerned about right now. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, comments, it's been in the works for quite a while.
Any other comments, trustees? If not, call the roll.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Planning and zoning officer.
A number of items tonight, Your Honor, the first being that the Jeff Green Memorial Subdivision, which includes the rezoning and the preliminary and the final plat, we're going to look to continue that again, we're still waiting for, or the developer, I should say, is still waiting to hear from the Enterprise Car folks on the agreement on the property switch-out that they're doing with their existing lease. So if you remember, there was some family member had a, I think a mother that wasn't, had health issues, so they haven't been able to get that person here to address it, so sorry to bring that to you again, but that's where we're at. The next couple of items are from our Plan Commission meeting, which was held Monday, April 22nd. Three special use requests, all for the same thing, the first being case number 19-02SP, 2230 Veterans Road, it's property of Gina Joanne Knapp, they're both present in the audience. They are looking to put a solar, roof-mounted solar system on the, an outbuilding that they have. Those three cases that came to the Plan Commission, there were no objectors, no, there wasn't any audience participation at all. They've all got favorable recommendations to you, unanimous recommendations, I should say, and, but that is case number 1902SP, special use for a roof-mounted solar system.
Move to approve?
Second.
Can we make the motion to approve all three?
I move to approve all three.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Craig, that's how you be efficient with time.
Billy's trustees, any of you have anything tonight?
Just, all right.
All right, if not, I'd like to...
Motion's approved.
Craig, that's how you are efficient with time.
Sam, you're doing it.
That's all I have.
Village trustees, any of you have anything tonight? All right, if not, I'd like to.
Can I just say thanks?
You may.
This is it, right? This is it. Are you sure, Andy?
Go ahead.
Okay. This is my last meeting on this side of the table. I just want to say thanks to everybody. It's fun, it, you know, the village board and working with the employees of the village is just like any organization. The more you put into it, the more you're going to get out of it. We do tackle some incredibly tough and complicated projects that, when we get to this point here, a lot of those things have, you know, have kind of worked themselves out. But there are going to be some more complicated ones in the future. So my advice on that is, when I look at the group, it's kind of a homogenous group, right? You know, you kind of seek outside counsel, seek some diversity, seek some things to just try to get as much input as you can in that way, because there are solutions that are out there for you guys, that we don't have to do it just, you know, just one way. And that's just the one thing that hopefully, that you guys look at and take into account and keep thinking about the generations that come next, because that's the one thing that the board members that have been here for a while, and the village employees that have been here for a while, you guys have put our leaders in good positions to make the best possible decisions for the people that are coming next. We just want to keep putting ourselves in the best or in the best place possible, so that our leaders can always make the best decisions available for that next generation. Keep thinking that way, and I was proud to be part of the organization, and thank you.
On that note, as I was listening to Sam's comments, several things came to mind as well. And something just this past week, someone had asked me in conversation of, did I have an idea of how many board meetings I had attended? And I'm finishing up on my second term, and you can do some quick math, and it comes to just a little under 200 meetings. There's another board member sitting here that has a few more on me. Over that time, and over those eight years, you know, I've done a little reflection this past couple of months, I guess, as we knew that the end is drawing near here. And sort of echo a lot of what Sam has already shared. Have kind of myself very fortunate to be able to serve the community in this role. I think anyone that's followed the board over the past several years, seeing that we always didn't have unanimous decisions, and I personally, I think that's healthy, that's a good thing. But I think no one can question the passion and the interest and the motives by the individual trustees, regardless of which side you're on, their interest was always in the best for Morton. And I'm sure with two new trustees going to be, being sworn in tonight, I just would commend them as well, Steve and Brad. I know you'll do a good job. I would just ask you to stay engaged and accessible, and you can't go wrong there. I think I got a real dose of that. Eight years ago, shortly after being sworn in, or excuse me, after the election and prior to being sworn in to my first board meeting, I told my wife I had run some errands, I'd be back in 15 minutes, and ran to the store to get a few items. And an hour and a half later, I showed up. And it was just because of those that I'd seen and come across, citizens that were interested in what's going on in town, but had, you know, something that they wanted addressed or taken care of. And they wanted your ear for a little bit, and that's a good thing. And I think what I took away from that and learned is it's very important to be accessible. And I tried to do that. Over the years, we all have, besides the board meetings that we attend, there's a lot of other public events that we all attended and put time in to that. And I think that's a good thing too, just to be out there, be visible, be accessible to the public. And that's a healthy board that can do that. Speaking of that time commitment, I look back on also, and there's many to thank along the way of that. Certainly, the staff was amazing to work with. Morton's very blessed to have a good group of employees in all of the departments that I've seen across the board, our treatment facilities, our streets, our gas and water distribution crews. I know when I start doing this, I'm going to forget those, but I think our police and fire and our emergency responders, we just have a top-notch crew here and have a wonderful quality of life because of that. We have department heads that are very serious, very focused on their jobs, and that carries out to their crews day in and day out. And then we've got a staff in the office, the ladies in the office that are second to none with taking care of things day in and day out. And something that came to mind too, in thinking about that, is just to show how effective and top-notch they are, is unfortunately, they experienced the loss of a couple coworkers over the last several years. And during those times, when it was most difficult, they really picked up the ball and ran with it. And it's very much appreciated what they did through their efforts there. So anyway, very thankful for this. I guess one other person, last but not least, I want to thank my wife. Was very supportive of me over the years, and we had some late dinners on occasion after board meetings, and plans had to get changed, or things had to get moved around. But I very much appreciate the support of my family and specifically my wife. So anyway, all that said, I enjoyed working with all of you and wish you the best, and that's it.
Thank you. If I could have a motion to adjourn to side DA?
So move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, you're here, why don't you just stay here? I get the last swing. We have an award here for you, Sam. Plaque here, Morton, established 1830, presented to Sam Herr, Village Trustee in recognition of your service to the citizens of Morton, June 18, 2012, to May 6, 2019.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And thanks for setting the record. The time I was gone, was it seven minutes?
Yeah, it was pretty, it was pretty good.
We're on about 41.
Might be the best meeting so far this year.
And Randy Belsley?
Likewise, we have this for you, presented to Randy Belsley, Village Trustee in recognition of your service to the citizens of Morton, May 16, 2011, to May 6, 2019. I made the staff dig out the actual dates, they wanted to go May or June, but they can do anything, you know. Thank you. And also, many of you probably don't know, but me and Randy go way back. His two sisters are my old babysitters, and I just want to know, I forgive you. When we were about eight or 10 years old, we were rollerblading on my driveway at my house, and I still have a fat lip where his rollerblade hit me in the mouth. I couldn't resist it.
Yes. All the new trustees, who wants to go? Rod, do you want to go first?
No, it'd be Steve and Brad.
Does he, whatever you want to do. Does he get sworn in?
No. Oh, yeah, he does.
Yep.
Yeah, he does.
Doesn't matter what order you go, but all three need, do you want to start? And Leesol. All right, if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Rod Bluenier, having been elected to the Office of Village Trustee.
I, Rod Bluenier, being elected to the Office of Trustee.
For the Village of Morton, County of Tazwell, State of Illinois.
For the city of Morton.
County.
County of Tazwell.
State of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Village Trustee to the best of my ability?
The Office of the Village of Trustee to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
You.
Brad? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brad Mendel, having been elected to the Office of Village Trustee.
I, Brad Mendel, being elected to the Office of Village Trustee.
For the Village of Morton, County of Tazwell, State of Illinois.
To the Village of Morton, County of Tazwell, and the State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will.
Support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution of.
The United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Village Trustee to the best of my.
Of the, of the, sorry.
Office of Village Trustee.
Office of Village Trustee.
To the best of my.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. It's tough. I think I bungled mine. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Steve Leach, having been elected to the Office of Village Trustee.
I, Steve Leach, having been elected to the Office of Village Trustee.
For the Village of Morton, County of Tazwell, State of Illinois.
For the Village of Morton, County of Tazwell, State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Village Trustee to the best of my ability.
Oh, sure, then you widened it. Okay. Can you repeat that?
I had a tongue twister on that one. Of the Office of Village Trustee to the best of my ability.
Office of Village Trustee to the best of my abilities.
Perfect. Congratulations.
With that being done, we're not going to conduct any other business tonight, so if I could have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For the next meeting, we do work.